Perfect. There we are live, awesome. Well, welcome, everyone. Tonight's episode of Clappers. I'm your host McIntyre, ex Heroes of the Storm pro. What is Clappers? So after the end of the HGC Pro League for Heroes of the Storm, I have decided to create my own show. Every Monday night, we deep dive into the competitive side of a different video game, whilst learning and practicing the game ourselves. If you're joining us for tonight's episode, I'm gonna be playing Rainbow Six Siege. I have yet to play this game. Been... Oh, I've played it, but it has been years. They've added so much to the game. And I have a, you know, history of playing Rainbow games back when I used to play console on Xbox with Rainbow Six Vegas 1 and 2. So, I knew the game style, I knew the gameplay. It is a very realistic shooting game. As the game basically is much more based around tactic and strategy rather than accuracy and speed, right? So, you'll notice as we play this game, that a lot of the combat is, is very, very slow, is very, very methodical, and it's much more like, almost as if you're playing a puzzle game against the enemies. So, what we're gonna be doing tonight, again, is I'll be playing myself, trying to learn the game, trying to figure out as much as possible that I can within the hours that I play tonight, and then the following week, we'll be inviting a guest on whose main primary game is Rainbow Six Siege, and we'll play with him, and we can ask questions and figure out more about the game. So... I guess I can play. I mean, I'll be honest, as much and as cool as this menu is... Oh, I'm a newcomer. Ha, thanks, game. This music may or may not need to end at some point.
Let me go.
Let me close my door really quick. Also, while we're sitting in the menu, let's talk about the menu. I mean, I just saw something here. Pro League broadcast tonight. They have an in-game notifier that lets you know that there's a game happening. Which is pretty sick. That is not, uh, something that Heroes of the Storm did. Or at least, if it did, it didn't let you know the team that is playing currently. So, looks like we get to pick our spawn point. Or spawn alley access. And we have a bunch of operators, so these are like the heroes of the game, and each character has a different tactile um, kind of strength. I know when I played, that my two favorite characters are Ash and Thermite. I think Ash is still really good. Uh, because she has a breaching round. Essentially, she's able to shoot a grenade launcher at a wall and breach through it. So you can breach at a range, right? Uh, which is really, really powerful. Um, the other character that I liked a lot is Fuse, actually. I think he has like a thing that you can attach to a wall that then shoots grenades
You'll buck hurry up.
Through the wall into the room, so you can clear a room
We need to locate a bomb.
With Fate, uh, with that character. Um, and I know at the very beginning of each game, you start with these drones, and the drones are super important because you can hide them and refer back to them. But essentially what you do with the drone is you try to find where the enemies have planted their bomb. Or their terrorists, or whatever. So this is how you scope out information to figure out what the other team's up to. And again,
The drone has found a bomb.
You can... So we, so we know where the bomb is, but you can put your drones in like typically like pretty cool spots. I'm trying to see if I can, maybe I can get it up onto the couch. Or into this chair, yeah. So, you can like hide them in corners, hide them on chairs. Uh, the other team also has cameras that they can use.
Insert in 10 seconds.
I'm looking to see... So here's a camera they can probably get a hold of.
Insert in 5 seconds.
Very similar to how my drone is being used here. I didn't find much info with my drone.
Proceed to bomb location.
Oh, we do know where the bomb is. It's right there in that room. So... The enemy could be looking out at us, because we know that the bomb's gonna be in those top rooms. Um, so here's where the kind of strategy comes into play. How do you breach the room? I know in a lot of the pro games, it's like wait, they, they wait until like the last 10, 20 seconds uh, before they even attempt to breach. As it needs to be quick, and enemies be fast, right? We can see a gunshot here, so maybe somebody's in here. You can also peek in this game, so that's something that you'll see when I shoot. A lot of the time, I'm gonna try to do that, because that'll change the direction in which my character is standing, so it's, it's kind of like a way to make my character harder to shoot for the enemy. Um, but, yeah, I have control of, if you see at the bottom, I have breaching charges, I have control of my robot, so I actually see here. There was an enemy. Right here. So I can see if I can scan him, let my teammate know. So now my teammate right there, that Fox guy, knows that he's there. If I can find any more info. So I am up on the roof here. This is the room below me. And there is an enemy there. That I might be able to... I don't know if I can. I'm going to try. No, I can't. I was gonna see if I could shoot through the roof, but I know that those guys are in that room. But I am... Oh, god. So you remember like, a lot of the... It's pretty much first shot kills. So, if you're peeking corners... Whenever I play games like this, it's all about the pie, okay? So think about a pie, and you wanna fill the room with a pie curve, right? You wanna kind of curve the, the room out from where you're looking. Slowly fill your way in. And if you think somebody's there, you expect someone to be there, then shoot on that turn, or on that pan. I'm still on the roof. It's like it's a 2v3. I don't have my info anymore. I, I still have my robot up, so let's hopefully without getting killed here. Okay, we don't have a robot anymore. I can probably throw a new robot though. See if I can jump it up there. Nope. Ah, so this is the... Maybe I can jump it in there? No. So, yeah, so this is the issue with this game. I still have 50 seconds. I still know where the bomb is. My team just died. I still have time, technically, to get into that room. But, time is not on my side at the moment. We can do an upside down rappel here.
No, that's a GG.
Oh.
This Ash doesn't know what the heck she's...
I don't know what I'm doing. You're right.
We have been eliminated.
Dang. He knew, dude, that guy just knew I was there. Yeah, he did know I was there. Unfortunate. So, a little, a little, uh, a little too tactical. A little too tactical. Bot. I'm a bot, poachant. Excellent. To be fair, I can blame my team for dying early. You know what I'm saying? Technically, three players on my team did worse to me. What's up, sorry, dudes? Okay, so now the other team's gonna do the exact same thing. They're gonna send in their robots. They wanna be on the lookout for robots. And I wanna try to keep them, the robots, their little drones, from finding our bomb room. Again, I think the, the worst part is that the more you know the maps, the better you're gonna do, obviously, in this game. And the less you know the maps, the worse you're gonna do. So in my case, I don't know the maps at all, right? So I don't know where to expect angles. I don't know what to, you know, I need to watch this corner, I need to watch that corner. And that's where I think time goes in to this game.
5 seconds left.
And will help.
Op 4 has yet to locate a bomb. You will be detected if you remain in this area.
Okay, so that is their area. So I'm gonna put a barricade here for sure. And then, I'm going to put a... This is like a, what's it called? He eats grenades. I'm gonna reinforce this wall. Okay, so now, this is the only wall they can shoot me through, but I should be able to hold this door. Someone here is ripping my team out. See, on that peek, I'm, I'm not even sure really what I'm supposed to be um, aiming down? If that makes sense? You see how he's... You see how he's holding just on the door? I don't really know. I didn't even know I was looking onto a... Parking lot. So, bit tough. Definitely, uh... Definitely, I think in the, in the future, on that push, I don't actually think we need to be peeking that door. Because we're on defense, the other players have to make a play. Right? So, in reality, we can just sit and crouch on the, um... And just wait for them to push that door. The primary reason I never got into this game is because it seemed a bit of a money sink with the way the paid content was laid out. Has it gotten better or changed? I'm not sure. I, I know that there's a bunch of, like, as you saw there, the operators, like, there's a bunch of operators I don't own. And they just came out with even more new operators. I'm not sure how accessible that is. Or if you can like... So we played Smite last week, and in Smite you can just buy a whole god pack, and just you own every god in the game. And I know with myself, I had originally bought this game when you had to buy it in order to play it, and I know since uh, the game has gone free to play, I believe. Or, maybe not free to play, but like you can pay very little to like unlock the base version of the game. And then from there, you play that, unlock um, the different characters. I'm not sure if that's still the case. I just need to learn the map. I'll say right off the start, like, with all Rainbow Six games, it's all about learning the map. So even just riding around right now is, is good for me. I'm assuming that they're down, the bomb's downstairs. Had to have been there. It's really unfortunate that I... It had to be somewhere in this other room. Maybe it's in the same room that the bomb was just in for us, which is this room?
You located a bomb.
Okay, cool. So we know where the bomb is. And, I kind of think I can push here. Into this main room. Let's see. Maybe someone's set up. And I'm not gonna be able to breach from the front door here. I think there's a way to just rip that whole thing down too. But I assume their whole team's in the basement. Again, maybe not.
One friendly operator remaining.
You're in the gap.
All friendlies have been eliminated.
Heard the second guy. Should've picked, I, I probably could've pulled out... Probably could've pulled out my pistol there. People die so fast, man. I'm in a newcomer queue, but I feel like I'm playing against people that have played before. Not really sure. These guys... I don't know the match? Yeah, the fact that they swapped payment schemes midway through really turned me off. Yeah, I agree. I, I think that it was, it was weird for me too, because like I think I bought, essentially because I spent money on the game, this, like, everything that I have here is what I had bought originally, right? But then they just started, but then they started adding new operators that you would have to then pay money for. Right? Smurfing is everywhere? Oh no. Interesting. That's weird. I don't see what the point of, oh, here we go. I got a pack. Hold and drag. Click the card on Revival Report. Sweet. I'm not really sure what the alpha pack, see, here we go. This is a pack because I was in Rainbow Six Alpha. Let's see. Open. Got a helmet. I think that's Jaeger. Pretty sure that's Jaeger. He's a pretty good character. I, I wanna see. He was a good, he was good back when I, when I played. Like, so what might be frustrating for a player like me, and I'm gonna be honest, it is because I'm frustrated, is like, I know that there's operators that I probably don't own that are better than what I'm using. Uh, or like attachments, right? Because like, you can customize, how do you? Is it backspace? What's that? What is that, uh, key there? Enter? Oh yeah, it was enter. Um, you can customize your guns. So, for me, as a competitive player, if I'm gated behind s- something that could make me stronger, then that is a bit frustrating. If that makes sense, right? Like, if I'm gated and the characters that I'm fighting against are stronger than me, just because someone spent money, then that is a little annoying. But I do know that the more you play, you can unlock characters. So it's, it's tough, it's tough. I mean, when you play, when you start playing League of Legends, I don't think you unlock every champion in the game. Off the rip. Same with Heroes of the Storm. So, when you compare it to that, then it's similar. Okay, there, people are like on the other side of this room. I think it in general, it's just a, a tough situation. I feel like it works well for... It works well for the... The devs of the game? I think we should park our guy right here. Oh yeah, when they gated the talents, that was so gross. So I was watching the pros, and the reason that I was so into my robot was when they were playing, like, they pretty much always had their robot out. Like, if I wanted to push the staircase, right, I would throw the drone, look, see if I was down here. Okay, so, so now I know like, the path. Oh, see, well, there was a guy right there upstairs. So that's really... That's a, that, that's me being lazy.
Plant, 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 plant.
My whole, my whole team's in the room though, so I, I think we win this.
The defuser has been recovered.
I think there's a way for me to...
Defuser is active, protected at all costs.
Hopefully we win this? A, a lot of people are dying? It's like a, a full on, I mean, the other team has to make a play. Both of our teammates are so weak though, like by literally like one hit. Okay, okay, 2v1? Nice. Carried that game. So I had the right idea, but again, I got, you, you just can't be lazy. You can't be lazy when you rotate, because if you rotate like I did, right, I was like, oh, I'm just fine. Uh, you can die. Like, even the, like I was saying with the pros, what they'll do, it seems like they throw their... Okay, so I just got something for Jaeger even. Do they throw their, um... Barbed wire or deploy? They're the deployable shields. They'll throw their little robots legit in the next room. Scan the next room to see if there's anyone peeking, and then they'll walk through the room. So what I did was I threw my robot into the next room. Didn't scan the whole room, just immediately scanned the stairs. Obviously, I don't know that there's upstairs too that I need to worry about. But I just need to be a little more, uh... A little more scanny about the rooms. That way I know the room's safe, then I can go to the next room. Alright, so this, I wanna put one of these here. I wanna put... I'm gonna put this here.
Bomb location compromised, plan accordingly.
Even spotted, that means there's robots somewhere around here. But, uh, one here. Can't pull one here too. Like, I know some people, like, the other thing about this game is you can you can shoot, like, you can shoot a hole through a wall like this, and then hold this. Like dude, there's so many angles and stuff people can play in this game. I could go prone. What's prone? Left control? Yeah, here we go. Prone. Yeah, so tonight I'm gonna be playing solo with the idea that I wanna learn the game a little bit before I invite guests on. So right now, we're just playing Rainbow Six Siege. That's the game that, uh, I'm looking into right now. Um... And then next week, we'll invite a guest on that plays Rainbow Six to play with us. Kinda wish that chair wasn't there. Just hard trusting the guy on my... Like, imagine me playing a game like this and winning. Welcome to Rainbow Six, by the way. I'm breaching here, dude. So somebody just tried to come through this side. Oh my god. What? Yeah, that's the Fuse right there, that's the cluster charge. But I had I had double... I had double, what's it called in there? Dang. That's, that, so that's Fuse. That's the character I was saying that I had originally played. That was really OP, because you can put like a grenade charge on the wall that then just shoots grenades into a room. But I had, uh, trophy systems up, so I'm confused. See if my teammate clutches it. Yeah, I had trophy systems up, so I assumed that they would eat up those, uh, grenades. But they did not. Alright, so you can shoot through walls in this game. They're saying we're bad because we got cluster charged. There you go. How do I type? Imagine a world where I'm new to the game and don't know what a cluster charge is. Weird how that works. All good, dude. Now we know what a cluster charge does, we got a better understanding of it, and the trophy system will not counter it. I will still get slashed, smacked up. So the bomb's probably that, somewhere in that direction. Maybe sneaky deaky Dutch about this. Dang, he wasn't even shooting at me. We have not found the bomb. Hmm, I'm not really sure where to spawn. Like every, I, I think spawning closer is better though. Front yard?
Insertion in 5 seconds. The defuser is now secured. You must locate and defuse a bomb.
One thing that's also kind of frustrating for me, but I think this is also because I've been playing a lot of Apex. Um... Is you have to hold left shift to sprint. Which is kind of annoying. That dude just killed our teammate. Oh shit, you leep so. Is that a bad guy that just came through? Oh my god, it was. So this is more like what I was talking about. Hey, you take your robot and then you can, like, this is the other room. So I know no one's in this room. Check the stairs really quick. See if there's anyone there.
Come to me, I will smoke it off for you and you can plant. On pink, you plant, plant, plant. I smoked it for you.
So maybe there's a new person here? See, my character has like a breaching grenade? I think you can shoot walls like that, maybe? And you breach him, and there it is. Okay, so, maybe person down here now? I was playing some Apex with a friend yesterday and he kept queuing because of the leaning in this game. Yeah, I was saying that when I first started, that, uh, like... Uh... When you shoot at people, you wanna lean left and right in this game, because it like changes the way that your character is, uh... Standing, so the enemy can miss shots on you. I think Doc's good, right? Just bust out the shotgun. I'm gonna get a kill, dude, whatever. Bulletproof camera. And deploy on floors and walls and maintain survival. It can see through and survive direct shots to the front plate. Also, this is just like a a permanent camera. It's pretty good, actually. Doc has the heal gun though, right? That's just built into my kit.
Protect the bombs.
Think you can self-heal, like overheal?
What are you doing?
Yeah, yeah, okay, you can. Is that stay on him? Or is that coming off of him? I, I actually can't tell. I'll get some people to my over heal.
Doc, doc, doc. This is not how you play doc. So, when someone actually loses health, you have to heal them, because right now it's prep phase, and before they even spawn, the heals you gave us is gonna be gone.
Ah, rip. Thought it over healed.
10 seconds remaining.
No. It only stays if you, like... It gets you up to 100. And that's the most it stays.
Easy, wow. Oh shit! Okay, okay. So we can shroud them, we can shroud them. So we can stop, we can stop down to these all name. That's the staircase I died to that guy that was pistoling up top before. So this is a way that their team can come to us. The other thing I don't like is, I almost wanna make spacebar crouch. I like if spacebar was crouched. Is, does this guy actually think this guy's hacking? What? Am I chilling? I think I'm chilling. I'm gonna hold this. I will get a kill here, holding this angle. There's so much time.
Everyone just say what you're looking at. Oh, and Doc also.
You can shoot me, you can shoot, uh, at me from a distance with your, uh, heal gun and, uh, get me.
He used all of them at the beginning.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, you can.
Shit! Yo, you know, I'm just gonna say this. At least I didn't die to that dude that shoots grenades twice. If I had the heal gun though, I think we win this. I was good pushed by them though. That guy used the grenade.
Hard left, there's someone too after you kill this guy. Hard left, hard left.
Hey, good try. Dun 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 dun. I'm at the bottom? That's alright, that's alright. We win these. I think, I wanna say smoke's good. Come on, Rainbow. Yeah.
Guys, I'll actually be a good doctor, okay?
Hello? What are you even saying to me? Wait, that's toxic. I'm pissed. He said, guys, don't worry, I actually be a good, what the heck? Bro, I was just trying to overheal people. This character throws gas grenades.
Don't reinforce that wall. It's fully, don't reinforce it fully.
Shit.
Doc, can you heal? It's okay though. And it instantly heals when you're, you shoot it and you're not.
I know how to play this. I'm good at doc.
Oh, I thought you were the.
No, I'm not the bot.
What the hell? You guys are fucking toxic. Yeah, that's kinda cool. Oh shit, that was one of our dudes though.
Last one's on ping, the second. If you have any smokes left, you can throw them and they will go through the wall.
Hey, gotta kill dude. Mute? I can mute on. Aw, man. Let's see your voice chat. We gotta kill, we gotta kill, pog champ! Did I get any packs? Insolent alpha pack, a 3.5. Oh, so it goes up every time you play a game? Yeah, that's pretty cool. That's pretty cool. Alright, I need to get into the settings so I can turn the, uh, you know? Yeah, these guys are being so toxic, dude. I mean, I guess, you know, when we look at like, I, this, this is not, this is honestly not very good light for Rainbow Six. I'll be completely honest because I am into matchmaking game of newcomer, which is for new players, right? This is the new player experience. So if you're expired, well, I can't open this anymore. Outbreak, oh my god, this thing. Sweet. Oh, there you go. I'm looking sick. So if you are starting off on Rainbow Six, uh, and you don't really know the maps or the game and you're queuing up and you're trying to get better and improve, then you're gonna play with a bunch of smurfs that, it seems, eh, I'll be honest, I mean, it seems as though these guys that are playing this game with me are very used to the game. If I'm gonna be honest. Like, it actually seems like they all know what they're doing. Which is interesting because this is the newcomer queue, you know what I'm saying? So, I'm not really too sure about that, but I, I, I mean, again, when we look at other games and online games in general, when you first start in games, it's kind of always like that nowadays. Uh, unless you're starting on a game that is brand new, um, where everyone's kind of new and bad to the game, then you're, you're gonna kind of experience this. I will say, and, and maybe after this game I can play it. There is a, there's a queue where you play versus AI, it's called Terrorist Hunt. And it's a way to learn the map. Um, without the pressure of, without the pressure of playing with other people. So, and, and like I was saying, in like pretty much all games, you know, even Heroes of the Storm, right? Think about Heroes of the Storm, Smite, League of Legends, I've been spotted, they have a camera somewhere. Uh, in all of those games. Holy moly, that guy. Shooting us through the freaking ground. Oh no! Yikes! We got wrecked, man. We all looked up at that guy and the other dude just pushed up. Look at these shots that he got on us. Oh my gosh. Yikes. Yeah, like pretty much all games kinda go like that. This is the new player experience though. Alright, I'm gonna be the best doc I can ever be. Arbed wire. Even like things like this bulletproof camera that I can set up, like bulletproof camera, I need to put it up, but I didn't, like, when I'm playing, I need to be aware of it, right? Or like the walls I can shoot through. Things like that, the angles that people could be holding. I guess at the end of the day, that's kind of what, what the barbed wire? The barbed wire here. So what's it, oh no, I didn't put the bulletproof camera, I have barbed wire on it, so. Here's the bomb room, so I assume. Hey, there it is. Like those are the angles you can shoot people at. It's so crazy. Reinforce this. I think this wall is a weak one too that I can shoot through. Here they come. Oh. Can I self heal? Please say I can shoot myself. Oh, no! I knew it dude, I knew it! I went for one more heal, I knew that there was a guy around that corner too, shit. I think my teammates killed him maybe? They're all three on that midroom. See even this, like when you're dead, you can use cameras. So as the, the terrorist, when they're attacking or whatever, the attacking team, I'm not sure if it's a terrorist sort of counter terrorist sort of thing going. But you can use cameras, see? This guy's spotted. My team knows about him now. Technically, this guy could shoot this camera out. Right? So he might not even know about, I think he just shot it, he just shot it out. I scanned him twice there and he shot it out, see? Like, this is like something that you would, this is something that you would learn the more you played. Stairs, that's a grenade. Dang. Uncle Keyman. Three hit him. Think, I'm slowly getting it. As far as like the actual combat goes, I think I'm getting it, but it's so dude, it's so hard, uh, to like really get, is Buck any good? I can't remember. No, the way is good. That character just seems bad. I think Thatcher used to be really powerful. Thermite used to be powerful because you thermite through, um, put thermite on. Remember this guy used to be really good because you can, like the impenetrable wall fortifications that people put on walls, I think he can breaching charge through them. Regardless of if the other team has something there to protect it or not. Definitely think, Doc's pretty cool though. You can self heal. Which is nice, being able to double tap and heal. There's an enemy over here. I mean, probably the bomb be in this room? Where it was for us? Damn, dead. Still not sure where the bomb's at. Maybe downstairs? Not sure how likely. Find it. Ain't no idea where this bomb's at. Yeah, whatever. That's kind of the frustration of, uh, not knowing the whole loadout of the map because technically there should only be like a few places. Wow, shooting me through the floor! Oh, I can get saved here. Please. Save me. Shooting me through the floor. Wow. Hog. Nah, I'm playing golf. Something on window. Think you can do this this way? Holy shit, dude. Talk about some insane angles. My god, dude. I got rez. That guy is fighting, that guy. I just didn't see him. Somebody shot here. So like that dude that was shooting through the floor, like for sure has the calks, right? Please don't be like looking right here. I should have thrown my drone. Mistake. Okay, so I have some barbed wire here. Think you can melee this shit? Where's the bomb? So now that I've shot a hole, I now need to, get my drone. Looking for bad guys. Okay, so no bad guys, so let's see. Oh! That was actually almost sick though. I didn't realize that when I left mouse once with that shotgun, my recoil was gonna shoot me to the sky. Almost. Okay, okay, so seems like every game we play against the other team is just far superior to, uh, my own team. Seems like every game we play against the other team is just far superior to uh my own team. Including myself. Playing newcomer may or may not be the hot. Quit matchmaking. So here, and then we can play, so this is, this is the uh terrorist hunt. But I'm hard. This is like legitimately playing co-op versus AI, but you get to play the maps. I'm not even su- you know? I'll, I'll, I'll play this mode. Just to show you what the mode is like. But I'm not even sure if this is the way to go. Like. For me, if I were to jump into this game and if I were to try to get good and, and be, be a better. I think the more you get killed by people. The better your awareness levels are trained. Like, for example, when that guy just shot me through the floor. If I were to play that map again and again and again, I think getting shot through the floor like that has me much more aware of. What the enemy team can do. Uh. And thus. You know, I might play it a little differently, right? I think for. These games in general. I actually think throwing that, that little camera out and scanning through and then going and then scanning and going, while it's a little boring. Maybe is actually the right way to play it. Or like the one round where I just prone'd on that corner. Definitely feel like that was really powerful too. Alright, let's see. So what does the shop have in this game? Highlights. Bundles. By gun skin bundles, weapon skins. With the weapons, burnt, Horizon burnt operations. So you can use actual, that's pretty cool. You can use in-game currency, this little uh gold tickets to buy skins, which is nice. So it's not, it's not gating you out of charms and gun skins and stuff. If you play enough, you'll be able to buy them. Which I think is nice. Obviously the cooler ones are gonna cost more, yeah. But I do like that. Let's see. I think I got a mask for Eager, wherever he is. And I have Jaeger, right? Headgear. Easy. Got a blue helmet. What is his other primary? Oh. I've actually. Done his. They call it Ralphie. These are all the weapon skins you can buy in this game. Goodness. It only costs twenty-five hundred. Where did the solid colors cost ten thousand of the in-game money, but that only costs twenty-five hundred of the in-game money? And I think I should save my um, you know what I actually should do? I'm gonna use my phone while this game loads. I think I'm gonna keep playing. I'll, I'll keep playing Ash. Let's, let's put it, let's make sure we have a scope on our gun though. Okay, we got the red dot. Alright, we're good, we're good, we're good. We got a lot of stuff there. Put a charm on to it, put this rainbow one that I just got. Um, I'm gonna look up a Rainbow Six. Operator. Whoa, what is happening here? So this is uh terrorist hunt. Okay, so this is nothing like. What I was just doing. Maybe it is. The terrorist. I can't see anything in this stuff dude. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be able to see anything, but I can't see anything man. Should be able to. Okay, so it's like a, the ranged breaching charge. Alright, we're going in. Oh god. Flashes come out when I press them. There's no cook. My god. Oh, I was doing one health. I heard some beeping and I started backing up. Can't see anything. Oh my gosh. Jesus. Sarm bomb, normal failure. I'm a failure! No! Alright, I'm gonna be honest. I'll be honest with you guys. I'm probably never playing that again. Probably never. Like I'm gonna. Feel like I'm in a better place to play casual than. Probably not. Play newcomer. Or I can play this one. Alright, let's play this. Hmm, let's play this uh special hostage Rainbow's magic mode. We leveled up? We are high level now. Digital content. Boosters. Uniform. Buy an entire legendary skin. For Doc. Oh, these are just full sets. My gosh. Think they added. So one thing that I remember, I, I think I saw that they added to this game. Is uh. For pro players, you could buy their weapon skins and stuff. I don't know if, it doesn't, I can't, I haven't been able to find that game. But I remember seeing. Like pro player. So if you wanted to like support a team. You bought their bundle. If it's here. Yeah, like that, see that? See? Rogue, Team Liquid. Immortals. Fnatic. Like, I always like that when game devs put that type of stuff in the game. It's like a way for players to rep. God, there's so many bundles. What in the heck dude? Yeah, so this is, this is uh. Interesting, right here. It's like a limited amount of. Characters that you can play. And everyone's like toys. This is cool. This is like a brawl mode, I feel like. This is like a. Not the normal mode. Not the co-op versus AI. I didn't even think this is an ARAM. This is more like a, let's put a fun twist on the game. I was, and what I do like about this mode. Is that the map does not change. So I was able to play this. I played this mode a little bit earlier. Today. When I was installing and making sure everything was good. Also, I need to change my ADS sensitivity is lower. Than my. That's where the bear's at. Um, my ADS sense is lower than. My normal sense. I need to. That's a C4 that he just threw? Oh my gosh. Okay, so nothing there. I think. Good enough. Yeah, but what's it called here? But, breach this. Oh, they can shoot you in the feet? That's not cool. Not cool at all. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm doing some action here. Also, thanks so much D2 Phoenix, welcome. Something was up there. I breach this? I actually know where that will go to. That would go to the office. I don't think that changes or does anything for me. There's for sure a guy below me. And I don't think that I can go down, can I? No. Kinda annoying. What are the other angles here like? Play behind the shield guy, but I. Seems as though the room that they're in is just a two-way entrance. I've been spotted, that's not good. That means somebody knows I'm coming downstairs. Well, we got thirty, we got thirty seconds, we're on the clock. There has to, okay, here it is. That's what we needed. I don't have a camera though, this is so sketch. Someone's holding some weird angle, they just smashed me here. Holy. This guy threw a C4. Next to the hostage and blew it up dude. Lol. Awesome. Okay. Let's play, end it. Nitro cell or barbed wire? I think I'll go Nitro cell, C4. Okay. So now we're on the defense. This map I, I think is so much easier to understand conceptually for this game. Whereas like with the other maps, man, there's so many angles. Like I just don't know the right way to attack or approach. But with this one, there's like three or four doors to get into the plane. And then there's like two or three entrances for each objective. So it just, it seems so much. Much more digestible, you know what I'm saying? I don't know, I think this, this, you can put it on these things. You can also put it on. I'm gonna put it on these two. What is my? Gee. Oh shit, okay. They're way. This is what Rainbow Six is all about. Patience. Got two minutes. Bear's right downstairs. Can always drop. He pings. Like technically sitting here, maybe, maybe I can get shot through the wall there? Guy downstairs where I was just at. I don't think there's any reason for me to go down there. I think I need a. God, they got eighteen seconds. They're gonna have to make a play soon. No play has been made. Tactical decision. That's it. I just, I just had to become one with the Rainbow Six. Where it's quite literally just stand in a corner in hard scope on a ladder and win. That's it. It's all about patience. Because technically, when I'm on defense, the other team has to attack. And the only way that they get it off her hand is if I push out. I actually. I remember back when we used to play this game, we played game battles. And if you remember game battles, maybe I think game battles might even still be around, I'm not sure. But it was essentially like a little league online. It was like an online league. But I remember we used to play this game and it was back when like the game modes was like. But I remember we used to play this game, and it was back when like the game modes was like Team Deathmatch and Search and Destroy, I think. Um... I just remembered, we would play Team Deathmatch. And it was legit, get a kill... And this was when Rainbow Six, you could sit on walls, kinda like the Division. We would get a kill and then we would have an entire plan of action that we would all get... Set up on walls and have like hold down an entire area. So, it was impossible for the other team to push. Because if they were to push, they would have to deal with... Oh, I'm no longer on the plane. They would have to deal with us. And we had all the angles covered. So, like, it's the exact same thing here, but I think what the, uh... Classes did for the game... Was it allowed... Um... It allowed a little more flexibility when it came to... Breaching. So that it wasn't so... Like back then, it was like you had to hit a sick frag grenade or something in order to like breach. You get what I'm saying, like? Now, you can use your robot, go downstairs, scan... See nothing. And then push up. Onset robot. And then repeat. So like, if the other team isn't paying attention, you can get... They're above you. Alright, so I'll keep my robot alive and I'll make the run-up. You could get way, you can get way more information, you can like plan a strategy way more efficiently now than you could then, because then you were just doing it blind. So if like another team had a hole on a certain area, to take that area was just so hard. There's a break in the wall there. It's a dude right here looking there. Which is annoying. Ah, dang. Dang, I shotgunned him too, I think. He just headshot me with a pistol. Or maybe I just missed and he one-hit me with a pistol, he didn't even headshot me? Does a pistol one-hit in this game? What? This is a decent push. My flash didn't work out the way I wanted it to. But I had the right idea. Try smoke again, I can't even, oh, castle. Let's try castle, let's just, let's just keep trying operatives. That way we at least know what everything does. You, you do get a scan on the characters, but I don't think, like, you don't go into a game knowing the other team's composition. So that's interesting when it comes to like the pro league. I'm sure there's some sort of strategy to that, right? Like the other team won't know... What does this guy do? He like does like the big, big reinforcements? Oh, he does the un... He does the unbreakable doors. Okay, so where's the... So what I should be doing here is, this guy's triple wires. Or we do something like... This gets reinforced. And then maybe... Remove this. Place this. The armor of this. And... We put this here. Which is the bulletproof camera. Can we die putting it here? Nope! This is like gonna have no view of anything. Alright, let's see. Ready? So at least I know, I can see that door. Can we shoot through this? This looks breachable. Shit, this is breachable. Can I? No. See if my camera sees anything. Ah, I can only see that door, dude! I need to put it like the end of the hallway. Do we just die from this right there? This is actually pretty funny. There's a guy, the guy, did you see that guy shooting through the wall? You can see the little bullet. Oh, it's that, dude. That kid was removed. Maybe it was team killing. Our teammate was team... Do this. Easy! That's the play of the game, baby. Let's go! I'm not sure if just defense is just the strongest on this mode. But we take those. Do we get a bonus? We get a pack. Alpha pack, seven percent chance. That's so crazy that you just get two percent per... Uh, okay, let's leave. Let's go back, let's go back to the real game now. We got, got anything here? Nope. Okay. I'll do it, newcomer. So actually, I really like the normal game of this. Uh, it just feels like I'm having a hard time... Not just getting plastered from like some insane angle or roof or something around, along those lines, right? I also feel like I, this might be the game... But defense is way easier than offense. Just because... As defense, I know where the other team can come from. And I have no idea offense, uh, where the other team can come from. And I think that has a lot to do with like my drone, drone, drone usage. The better I use that drone, the more... Information I'll have to be able to push in. So if I drone a little bit up, check a room, scout it, nobody, then I step up, keep doing that. Think that that, that's the way to... Abuse on offense and how you attack, right? Then I can know if they have like a C4 somewhere hiding, uh, camera... Um, just any, any of that stuff. I, I have way more information on that. But it's, it's been interesting, it's been interesting. I don't know, this is such a, it's such a weird game because this game's competitive scene is still really healthy. And the developers are still putting so much time into it. Like... They, they want the game... To be good. So, whenever you know a dev wants the game to be good... For the most part, I feel like that's a start, right? They're actively working for the game to get better. You guys get to look at my gallon of water that looks like a giant bottle as I drink out of it. Don't forget to drink water, everyone. It's very good for you. I haven't been drinking enough. So I'm gonna play as much Ash as possible. I think Ash is good. And I think the, the fact that you can breach through doors with Ash from range makes you powerful. And I need to, and I need to realize that and I need to learn how to utilize that. Uh, I think we've played this map before. This is the one where the staircase is right here, the double staircase, and I died there. Yep, so they can be right down in here and they can shoot through any of those plaster walls. We have found the bomb. Okay. So already understanding the map a little bit more. There's the bomb. Bad guys. Cool. Perfect. See, like, this guy's, this guy's really good. You know how I was saying like you can get your character up on really cool areas? This is one of those cool areas. Like, that guy has no idea. See what we got going on down there? Anything? No. So we can go up the stairs. Check out the top of the stairs, see if there's anyone there. No need to worry about. Doesn't look it. So we can easily get up and around the corner here. I think, unless I get shot through the roof. Or here, I guess I didn't really check that way either. I think here. Chill. This is about as far as I checked. Got a guy right there through this wall. Dog, we smart. Are you serious? Are you serious? We're adapting. We're slowly adapting here, guys. He's just in the corner. Aw, man, he destroyed me. Woo! Oh no, it was another one! Ah, dang, let's see. Ah, chucks. The worst part is it, he's at the end of tunnel. He's at the end of... Oh, this guy clutches it! Oh, he reloaded! Yo! Naaah! Good try. Okay, so, so, just within an hour of playing... I'm adapting to the fact that... There are walls that you can shoot through. Okay, I'm gonna play dock too, I think. I think I like dock. Make sure I have... Scope on it. So, the, the, the plaster walls you can shoot through, I don't even know what any of his attachments do. I'm just gonna put a grip on it. Um, any of the walls you can shoot through are the, the white ones. Get the bulletproof camera. So in that case, I droned, knew that the people were on the other side and was able to kill two people that way, so that's pretty sick. Alright, so my camera probably wanna put it like... Here? Again? Better have a drone in here on us. Yeah, I feel like guarding up these walls is good. Unless... I wanna use this wall. I might wanna use, I'm gonna use this wall, I think. Maybe should have reinforced my, this side over here. Already blown a massive hole in the wall. There's this, the roofs, the roofs, man. I just don't think about the roofs. Like, I think somebody, I think they can shoot... I think they can shoot through this for sure. Like, almost certainly. Is my camera already, oh dude, the guy killed my camera! Oh man, oh, this is the armor thing. So I'm worried about this. And whatever just, oh, no, no, my, that's my teammate that was... Yeah, this is what I'm paying attention to right now in this game. This staircase, I think. That's right, I'm dock. I think he's right above us. Aw, it wasn't good enough. Got him! I don't need to push that guy, man, that was dumb of me. Should keep this hold. Watch that, too. Oh! Dude there. I don't know where that, I don't know, let's see. It's on that staircase. Let's go, baby! We're learning, dude! We're adapting! Yes! I've played this map twice now. So I actually know where that staircase is, cuz I died to that guy who pistol me. And then I just used the camera, and I got vision of the staircase. So I knew that there was a person coming. And was able to kill them once they breached the wall. Look at that, boom! Yeah, so this character's sick cuz you can just breach windows from a range. Which in most cases, players like barricade doors in front of them, and they expect when a barricade is broken that there's a person on the other side of it. And I think with this one, this, it punches. I might be able to shoot through plastered walls too, I'm not really sure. We can try, we can try that. Try to actually shoot through a plaster wall. As her. You know what I actually really need to do, and what's, I think, very slowly giving me a headache even? My field of view. Let's see what this looks like now. Wait, did I apply that? I don't know if I did or not. Okay, must be applied. I'm so used to playing like a wide field of view. The game feels so zoomed in. Half found the bomb. Yeah, it's so much better with field of view like that, oh my goodness. Can I just kill that guy with that blast? Oh! Oh, he moved! Dang, good try! Here we go to... Telepathic Jesus. Thermite? I think I'm supposed to actually be playing the cameras, cuz I can actually provide info for my teammates with these things. Ooh, did I add the diffuser too? He's holding that corner. Was holding that corner. Oof, got the bombs. Probably right there. What? Excuse me? Nice, okay, the timer starts! Sound like a shotgun. So the timer's at the top of the screen? I don't know about that challenge, dude. He can just hold that, he can just hold that angle. Pretty much game's over, I think, at this point. I don't know if... Nice play! Ooh, gone them both down. Not really sure what their strategy was there. We're the number one player right now? Yo, let's go! Dock, man. I can also self, if I know I'm gonna go into a fight, I can self heal as dock. I overheal myself, and then I can challenge as well. So that's something to remember. Tachanka? I think Tachanka has a turret that he can set. If I remember correctly. Man, you gotta like move this second to the... I'm gonna put... Camera here. Make this reinforce so they won't be able to shoot through it. Oh, there's a camera already out where I put a camera. Oh my gosh, he's killed them all! Yo, Dexter Laboratory there, what does this button do? Big show right here, let's see. Lego! We caught cheese. Oh god! I just needed to make sure he didn't get behind me there. Yo! In BP? Okay, okay. Alright. That game didn't feel near as much as a Smurf Fest. Also, I think the important part that's actually happening here is I'm learning the maps. Um, I can't tell you how confused and lost I was on those very first games that I played in comparison to that one. Um, as far as where the other team is at. Or where they're gonna come from. And I'm still pretty bad about it. I'm gonna be honest. Uh, I still kinda have no idea at all what's happening, but... I'm starting to see how I'm supposed to use the tools that I have to get wins. That makes sense. Oh, Telepathic Jesus is on their team, I guess he's pretty good. It looks like he played these two maps. The snow map, this map. I think there was one more map that was in the pool, maybe, that I've seen so far? Not a huge fan of this map. Make sure we use Ash. So Ash can breach walls that don't have the metal, uh, the fortification on it. She might be able to breach the fortification too. To be honest. Haven't actually shot a grenade at that yet. Maybe she can shoot through that too. No bomb here. I'll be upstairs. But I was just on there, what the hell? This is a good area to breach down there through, I think. Reinforce, reinforce. Bomb. Dude here? Top of the staircase there? Oh, that fucking hurts me? Oh, shh. There was a chick that was here? What are these? I don't know what that little red eye is. Just freaking me out. I think the dude's... Fuck, he was right there. Oh, let's go, baby! Woo-hoo-hoo! That was so sketchy, oh my gosh! Jeez... This game is so different than Apex, it's practically not even the same. Yeah! It's a little bit slower. A little slower. Okay, so we're navigating a little better here, guys. We're navigating the battlefield a little bit better, for sure. Turns out that like, the way that the, so the next step, I think, for me now is to like, learn the camera spots. So like, on defense, like right now I have camera spots. I need to learn these camera spots, okay? Because these protect me, right? Let's say for this, for example, here, this room, this is the room. Shit, forgot that thing. This is the room that the bomb's in. In this case, it's not. This is the room that the bomb's in. Right, so if, for example, I fortify this wall... And then, when they push, I use this camera. I'd then, no, if there's someone out here, right? Vice versa, I could go over here, pick this up. Put my unkillable camera on this wall. And come back in here, come back to my reinforced wall. I can still get shot from right here. But I have this camera now, I have this camera. This room protects me here. Got this angle. Right, so... No one in the basement. Fortunately, I think, this cam, no. Oh, so the camera I placed, no, I said, this camera, I was gonna say, the camera I placed is good, but this... Roll careful here, so I'm gonna juice myself up. Someone's got an angle here that's just ripping my t- Oh, he shot me in the- Oh, he got me through the feet or something, maybe he had a thermal scope? Ah. Oh, he's got a thermal scope! I knew where both of them were! Damn dude. It was so close, actually. Yo, what's up, MacTide, I didn't know you played Rainbow Six Siege. I do not play Rainbow Six Siege. But every Monday, right? 9 CST. Start a show called Clappers where I kinda dive into the competitive side of a video game. And this week, we're doing Rainbow Six, so tonight is just me studying Rainbow Six and playing it, so I have a better understanding of the game. And then next week, I'm gonna hope to get a guest on the show to talk about the pro scene and, you know, how it's developed, the community around the game, so forth, so forth. So, this just gives me a better understanding of the game. And it allows me to, it allows you as a viewer to watch and learn the game with me. Um, what I would love to have is like, an actual growth between not only me, but for you guys when it comes to these games, when I, I kinda learn them and go over them, so... Hopefully... By watching, either you can help me get better, or you can try to get better for yourself, uh, through my trial and error of learning the game. I would say that my ability to play this game when I first started it tonight, and where I am now, is way better. Uh... The biggest deal has definitely been just learning the maps. And that has been the hardest part. It's gotta be on this third floor. You located a bomb. Damn, that's fine, I know where it's at at least. Ah! Whatever. Oh, there's another one there, damn. Good shot. Ooh, just barely saw my head. Ah, I had such a right idea, but I just failed when I threw my robot into the window. I wanted to get the robot in there and then scout. Hopefully my team can win it. 4v3. 3v3 now. Alright, this is over, I don't think my team has, has what it takes. I'm not even sure where this guy's going. Oof. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm like level 13. That's a bad look, Brian, right there. This is a tough one, actually, for me. I can win these, but I have to... Um, I have to clutch like pretty hard. Oh, no, that's not what I want. But it is nice that I've gone from the worst player on the team to... The best.
Protect the bombs.
There was a robot. I think the other robot went this way. Putting my fortification. Probably put it here. Actually, absolutely no fortification on this side. Can this wall not be shot there? Please don't kill me right now. Where's that at? They're all out there, they're sitting on a drone. Shit. Sorry dude. I'm not really sure what this thing is. I think this is like a little drone that that guy can fly. I had to guess their team is... Ah, it's good. I think they're coming on the door that I have my bulletproof camera on. Which is up that way.
Just a little prick.
Fuck. Can get a fish in? No, shoot yourself, you- Sicko? Ah! Dang, he roasted me. Almost. That was a tough one. I think I was the only person on my team that got a kill, yeah. Tough, tough game to, to win. I'm getting better though, I'm definitely getting better. We'll play, we'll play one more. I'm starting to have a little more fun now that, uh... I figured out the game. It's a little weird that I'm just like, dancing between cameras, but I assume that that's, that has to be how the game's supposed to be played, right? Like, I feel so much stronger doing it that way than like, hard checking every corner. It has to be, that has to be the way the game's played. And if it's not, then there's no reason anyone, I don't know, yeah. We're level 14, yeet. Yeah, early challenge. Let's see what the magic collection, UI. Probably helps if your teammates can actually come to. Yeah? What is all these notification bells? This weapon skin has been added to your, this has been added to your weapon. Thank you for helping us, as a reward, we've given you the cyber friend. Mark is red. I, I don't know how much I like, um... It, like, each character has a different gun that then has a different skin, is that how that works? Like, I'm not sure how I feel about that. Ooh, that looks so cool. Alright, I was looking up a tier list for the best operators, let's see. See if anyone in- See if anyone in the chat can agree or disagree. Hibana, Ash. Okay, Ash is tier S, perfect, so I'm doing, I'm doing right. For attackers. Hibana and Ash. Thermite, Buck, Sledge, Maverick. Okay, so I got some, so I got some, I got some high tier characters. That's pretty good. Already dead? That's not cool, can I switch? Do I have any other build other than this? Try not, yes. I feel like this guy, the way that he's playing, he just gets roasted if there's someone that's like, got info on him. This is a cool map. There we go, we win nice. We win these! Kill him. Kill him! I guess it's downs, this guy's got a good downstairs. There's the bomb. Oh yeah, baby. Nice. This guy, I don't think this guy knows that he can, um, ooh, smashed him. That he can lean. Should like always lean in this game, not like, instead of your whole character's like shoulder showing, only like, you know, maybe your head. This guy might actually get the rez on him. I think Blackbeard, is Blackbeard a good attacker? I remember way back that shield was really good, yeah, it was, he's an A+. Hibana. Do I wanna get Bandit or Hibana? Those are both strong. He's right to the right, right? Oh, dang. The old Glass, dude, so many people play this, so many people play that, I remember even back when, um... When I was playing, years ago. People were playing Glass and like... It's like snipers? Snipers are kind of whatever. Turns out, in these type of games. Alright, do we have Bandit? Bandit. Ha, see? I, dude, the, 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 the characters that I was playing then are still good now, that's so funny, actually. I definitely like the red dot more. Play the flash hider. And I don't think we put the laser on, cause you can tell, and then we'll put the zombie on it, cool. Nitro cell. Probably because of the nitro cell, he's good. I can put an explosive on a wall, watch a camera. And blow some up, this, this spot was OP. I don't really know what the electrical charge does, though, I'm gonna be honest. Does anyone in the chat know what the electrical charge does? Like, what does a shock wire do? Shock people when they get close by, or? So this is the where we wanna be at. They're just standing out there shooting at us. They shot the camera that was outside. They shot the camera that was outside. We no longer have the outside camera. This dude is standing all the way back there, huh? Hopefully, that guy killed him. Let's see. Oh! Oh, the guy like fell right beside of me, dang. Did that, so that's something that I didn't know about that, that spot, is that there's an, oh, there's a, there's a roof. There's a way to get in from the ceiling, I guess I should say. What was the other character that was good? Maverick? Hibana. Hibana, there she is. Hibana. I think Hibana is typically banned. I'm not even gonna lie. I think in competitive play, they're allowed to ban operators, and I think Hibana is one that's like pretty much always banned. I'm not sure why. But she's not banned here, so I should fire. Ha, abuse. Thank you. I'll just hide here. I wanna keep this alive, and then I'll use it when I wanna push. I also know that up in that corner is that, um, what's it called that I need to deal with? Holding that angle there. No thanks. Alright, we're gonna challenge it. Not even worth it. Oh my god, what the hell? Oh, like you- I even could see on the map that he had pushed me. Oh. Maybe that character is the one who put that welcome mat back down. I think my team can win these. There we go, there we go. Let's go Blackbeard. Dude's using a sniper rifle. Why'd he take that? He put a new one on it? Oh, snap, okay. Pretty sure you're in, in, unable to shoot through that. Like, it has to crack. So, it'd be like, as long as he keeps a headcam, like this? As long as he keeps a headcam? There, right there. What in the- Wait, that was an insane attempt at a plant. Oh my goodness. Yikes. Alright, oh. GG? Little weaker round. Only got to play two rounds that game, though. We lost all three. But I think that's gonna be it. This guy's BEMing. I think he's just shooting guys that body. This is the, uh, is it? Yeah. It's interesting. I'm not so sure. Like, it feels like the guys I'm playing against have been playing for a while, though. That's what's so weird. Otherwise, I found a lot of fun playing tonight, I think. I think I've learned a lot about the game. I have a much better understanding of it. Uh, I think if I had not done this, I would not have any idea about the game at all, um, from watching it. Because of the perspective that like the pro players use, um, you really don't get a feel or sense of, A, how fast you die, B, what any of the traps or anything are doing, uh, and, and see the, the cameras. Like, the cameras, man, they're all looking and watching, and you have to be careful and pay attention to them and shoot them out. The learning where those are at, I think is so important. So, there's still a lot to do. I think the end of this episode and the study session is gonna end here. I'm gonna continue to stream this game this week on my own stream over at McIntyre LOL. But this is gonna be it for today's episode of Clappers. If you guys enjoyed, uh, please throw a follow on either the YouTube channel or come over to Twitch, uh, HeroesEarth. There will be a new episode next Monday. We're gonna try to get someone within the community to come and play with us, to try to teach me a little bit more about the game. Um, is it, it's interesting, and what I hope to do is that you just saw how I experienced the game now without any direction, um, and the kind of adaptation that I made by myself with no help, and what I want the next episode to do and show is how much easier and how much more we can learn if we have someone to guide us, um, in a, in, in the correct direction, right? Also, while talking about Rainbow Six Siege. So, that's gonna be it for this episode. Again, thank you guys all so much. Shoutouts to Silence and Ridgeback for sponsoring HeroesEarth. Guys are great. You can check out both of them if you're looking for an antivirus software or an amazing bookbag. That's gonna be it for me. Again, McIntyre LOL is my Twitch channel. If you wanna check me out, play some more Rainbow Six Siege this week. Until the next episode, though, next Monday, 9:00 CST. I'll see you guys there. Thanks for clapping with me tonight. Goodnight, guys.